Everyone. Father Graham, would you like to say prayers?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Oh God, the Creator and ruler of all, we ask your blessing on the members of this county council, who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We pray that they may have wisdom, patience, and the ability to listen to one another, and to the needs and desires of those whom they represent, that through their dedication and hard work, this county may duly prosper, and the life of all its people enhanced. We make this prayer in the name of Jesus our Lord. Amen. We give you thanks, heavenly Father, for this new council, for all who have served you in the past, and all who will now serve you in the future, for those called to office. We pray for all who work in this authority, that their dedication and commitment to the communities in the area may be strengthened by your heavenly grace, through Jesus our Lord. Amen. Invite you if you wish to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Please be seated. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, from all sides of the chamber, who came to support me at my civic service on Sunday. I'd also like to thank Mike Bradbury, Kirsty Fenton, and Carrie Fitzpatrick, for their excellent organisation of the event. And a special thank you to Father Graham Bott and Reverend John Davis, for delivering such a truly memorable service. I'd also like to take this opportunity to wish candidates in today's by-election the very best of luck. It appears again to be a very close call. I must say, though, if elections were won on the number of trees cut down to produce campaign leaflets, and the resulting carbon footprint delivering them, then one party would win by a country mile. I'm not looking anywhere. Okay. Right, item one, apologies. Are there any apologies for absence?
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Council. We have five noted apologies. We have councillor Bentley, councillor Carver, councillor Humphrieson, councillor Martin, and councillor Tatt.
Are there any further apologies? Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Item three, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 22nd of May 2025 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Item four, chairman's correspondence. Staffordshire residents recognised in His Majesty the King's Birthday honours. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in congratulating Sean Winray from our Members' and Democratic Services team on his award for the Member of the Royal Victorian Order, MVO, for services to the Crown in the King's Birthday honours. On behalf of the council, I would also like to congratulate the following Staffordshire residents, who have also received honours. Officer of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire, OBE, for Michael Charles Meller, B.M., of Cannock, Coordinator of the Miners Memorial at the National Memorial Arboretum, for services to heritage and to recognition of the mining community. OBE for Diane Swift of Burton-upon-Trent, trustee of the Creative Learning Partnership Trust, for service to education. Member of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire, MBE, for Professor Sharon Arkel of Burntwood, Dean of the Faculty of Education, Health and Wellbeing at the University of Wolverhampton, for services to higher education. MBE for Rachel Daly of Tamworth, for services to association football. MBE for John Ian Davies of Stafford, Associate Professor of Biomedical Science Practice at Staffordshire University, for services to the NHS Diagnostic Pathology Service and biomedical science education. MBE for Safron Fern Lane of Pattingham, lately captain of the GB Women's Ice Hockey Team, for services to sport. MBE for Graeme Lee of Tamworth, Chair of Stafford Narrow Gauge Museum Trust Limited, for services to heritage railway preservation and charity. MBE for Gareth Brian Moss of Alwass, Chair of the Trustees for John Taylor Multi-Academy Trust, for services to education. Medalist of the Order of the British Empire, B.E.M., for Elizabeth Brown Lees of Tamworth, Foster-Career for the Birmingham Children's Trust, for services to foster care. B.E.M. Gavin Brown Lees of Tamworth, Foster-Career for Birmingham Children's Trust, for services to foster care. A B.E.M. for Andrew David Buttery of High Offley, Volunteer for Staffordshire Fire and Rescue Service, for services to the community in Staffordshire. A B.E.M. for Valerie Neil of Stonal, for services to the community in Stonal. B.E.M. for Tracey O'Flaherty of Stafford, for services to the community in Staffordshire. Former county councillor Jeff Martin. It's my sad duty to inform the council of the death on the 28th of May 2025, of former county councillor Jeff Martin. Mr Martin represented Etching Hill and Heath, Cannock Chase County, County Electoral Division, between 2009 and 2017. He served on a number of council committees, including the Audit Committee, Planning Committee, Regeneration and Infrastructure Scrutiny Committee, Corporate Parenting Panel, and Prosperous Staffordshire Select Committee. Could we please stand for a minute's silence? Please be seated. I was just going to check my phones off. I hope you've all done the same. I'll check my phone before I came in. Item five, statement of the leader of the council. Councillor Cooper, will you move consideration of the statement, please?
Chairman, I'd like to move the statement, please.
Item one. Any speakers? Item. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you. I'm delighted that the construction of the M6-M54 link road has now been confirmed. The current A460 through Staffordshire is continually jammed with traffic, and this new link road will significantly alleviate that congestion. This is excellent news for South Staffordshire, particularly for the residents of the adjacent villages of Featherstone, Hilton, and Cher's Hill, which have been blighted by heavy traffic almost since the M54 was built. The new road will also facilitate easier travel for commuters and businesses, bringing considerable economic benefits to the region. The I54 Employment Park, which straddles the Colesal and Brood divisions, will be one of the key beneficiaries. This initiative was strongly supported by the previous Conservative administration, South Staffordshire District Council, and Wolverhampton City Council. I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the previous county councillors in that area, who have long and hard advocated for this scheme on behalf of their residents. Furthermore, immense gratitude is due to our local MP, Sir Gavin Williamson, who has been instrumental in pressing both the government and the Department for Transport for this road over many years.
Councillor Edgell.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you. Whilst I welcome the work to be done on the new link road, can I ask the leader, will you work with the present government for funding to build a link road south of Stafford, from the A34 to the M6? When there is an accident on the M6 between junction 12 and 15 in Stafford, the Stafford roads are at a standstill. Our roads in Stafford take a battering with the heavy goods vehicles. Can I ask that this situation is looked into, please? Thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to ask my portfolio holder for highways to answer that question in more depth, if I may. I call on councillor Pete Mason.
Councillor Mason.
Thank you. Yes, of course we will. We are going to work on revising the forward plan for highways and transportation, and we will do everything we can to ensure that Staffordshire gets the best roads, be it through ourselves, be it through the highways agency, be it through central government funding. So yes, of course, we are willing to work with yourselves and make sure that those ideas get taken forward.
Thank you. Any speakers? Item three. Oh, sorry. Councillor White.
Morning, Chair. Thank you for that. Morning, everybody. Nice to see you all. Yes, so I didn't want this to go uncommented upon, because it is the most important thing on the agenda today. We can't do anything as a council for our residents unless we've got the money to pay for it. This is the final financial outturn for the budget for the 2024-25 financial year, and we brought that budget in to within less than 1% of a variance, and actually a small underspend, and that is a tremendous achievement. That means that that budget was really well set, it was accurately planned for, and our officers have done a fantastic job of sticking to the really difficult tasks that we as politicians set them. There were tough savings in this budget, which they have delivered, and a little bit above and beyond. And I would like to invite the leader and the cabinet member for finance to join me in congratulating Pete Shakespeare and his team in particular for an excellent budget, well crafted and well delivered by our officers.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you once again, and thank you to my opposition colleague. I agree that the officers are absolutely tremendous. We fully support the officers at the end of the day of everything they do. But again, it's who leads them? Do you lead them or do you follow them? I'd like to ask my colleague for finance, councillor Large, to respond to your question.
Thank you. Yes, if we looked at the 5.3 million underspend and the way it's been managed, I'd like to congratulate as well the officers that through very difficult circumstances have managed the business of 800 million. And it's probably the fact that it's not to the effect of our administration opposite, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. Thank you.
Item three, any speakers? Councillor Edgell.
Thank you very much, Chairman. It's good to see the Cabinet taking the initiative from the previous Conservative administration to take on board the contract for Haven School. So many children needing our help. I speak from experience of being a mother of child with special educational needs. Thank you.
Item four, any speakers? Councillor Edgell.
I do apologise, Chairman. Thank you. It's good to see the council is moving forward the framework for food waste disposal. The community and wellbeing in Stafford Borough have taken a task and finish working group on this, and have also listened a lot to what the Newcastle Borough Council have done a lot of work in the last 10 years, and have still been doing that. So, you know, it's good to see that we're moving forward with it, because it's got to be taken into account to April 2026. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Item five, do we have any questions? Item six, do we have any questions? No? Okay. Oh, sorry, councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, again, I didn't want this item to pass by without saying another huge word of congratulations to the excellent officers who work in our adult social care team. These CQC inspections are huge. It's like having Ofsted come and inspect you if you deliver health services. And as we all know, adult social care is the largest part of the county council's budget, and it's one of the critical services that we provide. There are thousands of people who rely on this, and if we get it wrong, people can come to serious harm. So it was enormously pleasing, and I trust all of you will have read the report, as I've done, to read in the report of the CQC for the inspection that they carried out in March and April. The glowing praise that they had for the services that our officers and the people who work in our care service provide, particularly around dignity in care and listening to people who are receiving care and their families. It was incredibly gratifying, and I just wanted to say congratulations to all of them. A particular thanks to Dr Richard Harling, the Director of Service, who has had to do an incredibly tough job managing the budget. We all hear about it nationally, don't we, adult social care, and how tough that is? Managing that budget to deliver that quality of service, a huge well done to him. And I will just note that that was an inspection carried out just before the election. So let's hope that that continues over the next few years, until the CQC come in again. I very much hope it will.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go with everything you said. I think it was more a statement than a question, but we would absolutely congratulate the officers for all their work they do.
Moving on to item six, notice of motion. Councillor Hall. Oh, sorry. Oh, we've got seven. Continuation of the item, item seven, pothole progress. Councillor Hussein.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Before I start, I'm sure the whole chamber will join me and pass our sincere condolences to Dr Patrick Joshi's family. Dr Patrick Joshi was one of the consultant in Burton Hospitals, and he died along with 241 passengers in India Ahmedabad. So I'm just referring to item seven, the potholes. It is great to see some great improvement going on in Essex Road and in Branston Road in my constituency. However, I totally agree there is more to do, especially towards the garlic cleaning area and the footpath area as well. So can I just get the reassurance from the cabinet member? He will look into those matters concerns. And on the same note as well, Mr Chairman, I would like to pass my sincere thanks to the crew and highways officers as well for their excellent cooperations, especially if you consider in the past few days the stunning scorching hot as well. Thank you for your indulgence.
Councillor Mason, would you like to respond?
Of course, we do want to carry on the work and mend as many potholes and improve the highways portfolio infrastructure as much as possible. You mentioned pavements, and pavements certainly are an area that have been neglected over time. And in fact, I think there was a period where the budget for pavement repairs was actually removed by the last administration. Maybe justifiably, because they've been dug up a lot by broadband and other providers. But having done that, we now need to go back and make sure they're improved. We do need to balance, however, the repairing of the roads with maintaining a functionable highways network. And I believe we are sort of reaching saturation point in the amount of work we can undertake at any one time. And we are working on making sure that we get that balance right. So I hope that reassures the councillor of our intent.
Thank you. Councillor Edgell.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, potholes, 2024-25, increasing the number being filled in. Is this due to the Conservative administration buying the JCB pothole filler? And do you plan on buying any more equipment from JCB? Can I also ask, what can be done about utilities coming in and putting traffic lights throughout Stafford, and probably throughout the county, and using their emergency powers to say it's got to be done? While I understand sometimes there are emergencies to be taken place, this is causing a joke and causing absolute mayhem throughout the county. We as councillors are not informed of these works, and it's very difficult to explain to the public when we don't know anything about it. So what can we do to stop these utilities just coming in, putting traffic lights everywhere, especially when we've got major roadworks taking place? I ask the cabinet member what can be done about it, please. Thank you.
Councillor Mason.
Do you want to do it, then? Was that? Okay. It's a small point, but it's a procedural one. So if the leader stands up, then you should refer it to the cabinet member, rather than the cabinet member standing up straight away. Thank you.
Okay, it's a pedantic point, but as it is a point of procedure, then please, councillor Cooper, would you like to comment?
Yes, pedantic bit is probably what the Conservatives got thrown out for sometimes. The issue about potholes is interesting, isn't it? And so roadworks. This is a council that spent and scheduled the roadworks prior to us being elected. So I find it slightly hypocritical, they're going to stand there and criticise that Stafford is actually blocked up. But I'm happy to pass that question over to my colleague, Pete Mason.
Yes, in response, you're right, the pothole pro has certainly helped speed up pothole repairs. And the second pothole pro, which I'll give credit to the other previous administration for having the foresight to order, has now been delivered and is being deployed on the network. I think part of the question was, do we intend to do any more? Well, I am working on a strategy for how we can take forward highways and potholes repairs. Despite your best efforts, the backlog isn't really getting any better. And holding a status quo position is not something I'm particularly happy to continue with. So we are looking at the strategy that should, and we want, to get us back into a stable state where the roads are repaired, we don't have a backlog, and we can continue to maintain them going forward. There was a second part to the question. It's been so long, I've actually forgotten what it was. Utilities, that's right. I totally agree with your utilities. It is an absolute disgrace that they can just come in, dig up the road, and tell us two hours afterwards that they've done it. I don't think the public realise that, and I think it is an education piece that we need to take out to the public. I am actually working on a communication piece around this very topic. And I'm also working on a strategy to lobby the local MPs to take this back to central government to try and get it changed so that we actually are left in control of managing works on our highways. I hope that helps.
Councillor Farrell.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah, potholes. There's lots of new councillors in the room. I'm sure this will fill your inbox as it does mine. This is very welcome progress, actually. I think it's good to see that we're fixing more potholes. Very pleased to see the big repair at Colesall Street in Faisley in my division of Litchfield Royal South, a 1.5 million pound scheme to completely resurface Colesall Street and the surrounding roads. Very pleasing to see that was done, and hopefully we can continue with this good work. On this side, we're very happy to work with the cabinet member and the team to ensure that potholes are filled in and sorted in a swift manner. But I would like to ask the question, either to the leader or to the cabinet member. You say in this report here that you'll stretch council resources as far as they'll go. Can you expand on that, please?
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much. To councillor Farrell. I do know that stretcher road, by the way. And one point about that road is it was held up for about two weeks, I think, when they actually did it, because some of the workers were threatened, I believe, which is a completely unacceptable thing. We all understand the stresses that repairing roads causes, but for it to be held up because of workers being threatened is not on, quite frankly. It doesn't help the residents, and it doesn't help the general public at all. So that's just one point regarding that. As regards the funding of potholes and other aspects, I'll pass it over to my colleague, Pete Mason, again, but it is something we take very seriously.
Councillor Mason.
Thank you, councillor. What do we mean by stretching it as far as it'll go? The reality of filling potholes and spending the money is how much value we put in the ground. What we want to do is make sure that every pound delivers as much of that pound into the actual ground and isn't eaten out by planning, facilitating, on costs, and other elements. So we're looking at where we can improve those arrangements and move that money to ensure that it actually delivers on the ground better roads, better pavements, better structures. Hope that helps. Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, let me just associate myself with your comments, councillor Cooper, regarding the dreadful behaviour in Tamworth with our workers being threatened when they're fixing people's roads. It's absolutely unacceptable. Sadly, it's far from the first time that it's happened, but I absolutely agree with you on that. And I think that although it's tempting to sort of throw political insults across the room, there will be more things that we can work on together than things where we'll want to argue with each other, and that's what our residents will expect. And I think that highways is an excellent example of that. We all know in this room that councils have been thrown a hospital pass for years by governments, Conservative and Labour, I don't mind saying it, who haven't funded the repair of roads properly. And we've been trying to squeeze every last little bit. we've been trying to squeeze every last little bit out of our highways budgets, with the added uncertainty of it only being an annual budget. So you never know what you're getting next year, which is really unhelpful when you're trying to plan programmes. So we've spent years at this. I'm grateful to the, to the comment in, in this item about solid progress. Thank you for that. It's hard work. We want to work with you on this, to try and make sure that we are doing as much as we can, as effectively as we can. We've, we've done quite a lot of it whilst we've been in office. We want, we want to support you in continuing with that. On that note, and as a local member in Burton, as I know the cabinet member is, thank you for sticking with the Conservative plans for the, for the big structural schemes that are being done around the county this summer. Really appreciate you doing that. It's going to have a big impact in Burton with schemes happening in the town centre at the moment. Really pleased that that's going ahead. And as I say, we'll look to be supportive and helpful in continuing to develop those programmes. Efficiency, spending money well, but also shouting hard to government to say, actually, give us the extra money that is needed, because you can't do it all on goodwill alone. So thank you, and we'll work with you on that.
Thank you, councillor. Moving on to item eight. Do you have any speakers? Well, what do you know, councillor Edler?
Thank you, Chairman. I feel like a duck in a box. I'm up and down, up and down, yeah. Lights, camera, action. Can I ask, this is good news. Personally, I would like to see more being done about the Crown Court openings in Stafford. I believe this is one of the only five towns in the country, actually, that does Crown Court opening properly, when the judges and that parade through the streets with all the regalia on and everything to the Crown Courts. It would be lovely to see that in action and probably lights, camera and action on that when it takes place. Would be appreciated. Thank you.
councillor Cooper, do you want to respond?
Thank you. It seems to be a sort of a one-person sort of question at the moment. Looking very good in pink, by the way. Yeah, the lights, camera, action and all the film stuff. I'm going to defer to my colleague councillor Martin Murray. This is his particular project he's very proud of. So I'll ask councillor Murray to comment.
Thank you. Yes, Screen Staffordshire can do far more than just produce the films. It brings people in. Like you say, we can now highlight historic moments that we have in many of our towns, shine a light, not just locally but nationally even globally, on our areas. These great historic moments, as you say, that parade that goes through that shows our history in its finest glory. It's a great promotion of our area. It's a great promotion of Staffordshire. It shows why we will be the beating hottest country.
councillor Catherine Brown.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Cooper, We Are Staffordshire is a fantastic website, that's just been mentioned, to showcase everything Staffordshire has for living, business, jobs and tourism. It was great to see the launch that's been mentioned of the Screen Staffordshire Film Agency in the Needwood Forest Division at the beautiful Horcross Hall Spa last month. That's my division. It is pleasing to see reform continue with this initiative set up by the last Conservative administration. Councillor Cooper, would you like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Conservatives on this very successful Staffordshire initiative? But please, may I ask for a polite reply?
councillor Cooper.
Very loud and audible question there. Maybe you don't shout next time. I'm going to defer again to councillor Murray. Again, this is his particular bit. He loves the arts and all the bits that go on with it. And he can answer better than I can.
Thank you. We Are Staffordshire, that front-facing broadcast stream for everything the county does, it's a fantastic base. But it has missed it. Something will be changing with it. It misses reaching out to the public and the wider audience. It's fantastic. It hits all our stakeholders, great interaction. And I've already started bringing along, working collaborative with the officers, and many of them excited by how we make this quite a bit better than what the previous administration did, and bring in the public to see all the great that we do because the engagement level. It's a field I know a little bit about over the last 40 years, has been missing. And we are going to bring that to the umbrella point. We Are Staffordshire were the umbrella point to reach out to the whole county and wider, to then link into the stakeholders, to each sector, to each lead, to all the internal infrastructure of our counties and our district councils to show where to go. But we first must make that lead to the public so that they are fully engaged and in full knowledge of the greatness we do. That is the change we'll make We Are Staffordshire to be. Great foundation. We're going to make it greater.
councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I just thought I'd, I just thought I'd respond in kind to this one as well. This is, this is another area where we can definitely work together. We launched We Are Staffordshire in 2021, in the, in the aftermath of the Covid lockdown and all of the limitations that are, that are put on businesses, particularly businesses in hospitality and in leisure and tourism. And we wanted to shout about Staffordshire because we were all too aware that for too many years, we've maybe been a bit over modest as a place. We've got a wonderful place that we want to tell the world about and encourage people to come and visit here, work here, live here and spend their money here. The first three years of that were a pilot. And councillor Murray is absolutely right that the focus on that was developing links with the business, the business sector itself. It's principally there to support businesses, but also with other stakeholders, other organisations. The plan that councillor Murray has described was always part of the next stage of the evolution of this, to open it out more widely. We're very happy to work with you on that. Can I encourage you to bring this to scrutiny at the earliest opportunity so that we can have a look at the work that's been done already, have a look at those plans that were in place before the election, and then that evolution of it that you want to do and take forwards? And we'll be really keen to support that. It's a really good initiative, rolled out now, pilot complete, showing its value. And we'll support you in continuing to develop that further.
councillor Cooper, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much for the question. Yeah, I think this is a very cross-party collaborative venture on this. Again, I'll defer to Martin because it's his particular speciality. But yeah, cross-party collaboration, which is not easy to see on a Thursday, is something we reengage in.
Thank you. He's absolutely correct. The work was done. As I said, the foundation was brilliant. We're expanding it out. We Are Staffordshire does come up for review in September, where we'll be putting that forwards. And of course, this goes to scrutiny, where it leads out, it comes back. And we absolutely need every member in here to be engaged, because this will last far longer than any political tie that we may wear here today. This is legacy for our county going forwards. And it will leave a legacy and make our economy and our people feel better off. It's not about politics, it's about Staffordshire.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine. Do we have any speakers? Oh. councillor Anne Edler.
Thank you very much. I, like many of us in this chamber, went along to the army barracks in Beacon Side on Tuesday evening. I was very impressed to learn the amount of expertise and knowledge you can learn from joining the army. And I just wanted to stand in this chamber and say a very, very big thank you to Beacon Side Barracks, to increasing our knowledge on the army and what it has to offer for the people in Staffordshire. Thank you. Well, countrywide as well. Thank you.
And our new speaker, councillor Graytrix.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to mention the Tuesday night engagement, which I know you attended and various other people did, engaging with the British Army. I think it's changed from the days of councillor Munro. There's something like 70,000 regulars, there's something like 30,000 reservists, and they are desperate to engage because they're desperate to recruit. They want both regulars and reservists. And the message went out loud and clear on Tuesday night. They will do whatever they can to engage with whoever they can. So they're quite happy to do work experience. They're quite happy to visit schools. They're quite happy to take on reservists and give them training and new careers. So they're very much leaning forward and hoping to engage with their community. And the other thing that they've said quite distinctly is if anybody's got local groups or voluntary sector that want to have some participation from soldiers, they will join because they want to participate in whatever's going on, including particularly sports. So they're very much leaning forward on that. This is celebrating the Gold Award, which is fantastic news for the county. I just wanted to highlight that as well as the covenant that's been signed by the county, there were two that were signed latterly by Stafford Borough and also Litchfield District Council. Obviously, Beacon Barracks is a jewel in the crown for Stafford Borough. But Litchfield District Council, it's mentioned in the report about the NMA. It's also the home of D M S Wittington, which is Defence Military Services, Medical Services, sorry. So the whole of the country's medical forces come for training in Wittington. So it's another jewel in the crown. I was quite pleased whilst there was in the Cabinet of Litchfield to sign that covenant. So I think we can celebrate county-wide, quite a large involvement with the British Army.
Thank you. councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I think it's important, it's important that we, that we do, we do mark this and that we say our thanks to our service personnel who are based here in Staffordshire. And we make sure that they are very clear how welcome they are and how appreciated they are in Staffordshire and by Staffordshire people. We're incredibly lucky, I think, in Staffordshire that we have some of the smartest soldiers in the British Army here in our county. So the signalers and the Defence Medical Establishment. These are people who we want to keep in Staffordshire when they finish their service. So it's really important that the military covenant works well for those people when they are in service in our county and their families who are living here, and that we're looking after them well. And we all know about the challenges that military life can bring in terms of family life in particular. But then also that we're encouraging those people to stay here and make a life here when they finish their service. And they are people who have an enormous amount to offer with the skills that they develop through their service in the Armed Forces. So thank you to them. Welcome to our county and please stay in our county when you finish your service.
Thank you. councillor Paul Jones.
Good morning, everybody. I'd just like to mention Armed Forces Day. On this day, I stood among heroes, past and present, at Armed Forces Day 2025. As a proud ex-serviceman of the First Battalion of the Staffordshire Regiment, it was an honour to be part of a day that celebrates the courage, the sacrifice and unity of our Armed Forces. The camaraderie, the shared stories and the respect shown by the public reminded me why service never truly ends. We may hang up the uniform, but the pride and purpose remain forever. Thank you all to who serve, have served and continue to support our military family. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Cooper.
I can feel, I can hear the chairman's charity jingling and filling up with a fine. Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I'd like to endorse councillor Jones here. I never served at all, but many of my family's generation did serve. And many of them never came back. And it's been an honour and a pleasure to go and see where they're buried across Europe. So my great respect and humble thanks to anybody that did serve.
Right, moving on to item six, notice of motion. councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. I brought this motion forward to shine a spotlight on the health inequalities in Burntwood and Chase Town, surrounding the delay in the healthcare centre. These issues deserve to be front and centre in the minds of both the officers and the members of this council. And I'm pleased to say that this motion has done its job. I've received firm assurances from the senior leaders, both members and officers, that we will be pushing hard for real progress on this matter. With that in mind, Chair, I now respectfully ask for that motion be withdrawn from today's agenda. But let me be absolutely clear. If I or the residents I represent feel that things are not moving forward with the urgency this issue demands, as has been the case over the last five years, I will not hesitate to bring it back to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. As the motion has been withdrawn, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Item seven, Report of the Independent Remuneration Panel, July 2025. Councillor Cooper, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. It would be remiss to not say that, of course, an independent remuneration panel should be exactly that, completely independent. So I'd like to move the report.
councillor Murray.
I'd like to second that.
Are there any speakers? No. Councillor Cooper, oh, sorry, that's okay. We don't need that. It has been moved and seconded that the recommendations contained in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report, 2024/25. Councillor Baker, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
I'd like to do the recommendation and also like to add a few words. I would like to begin by expressing the gratitude to the former chairs for the work on the annual report. This year's report highlights the importance of scrutiny. And I want to acknowledge the role that our scrutiny committees have played in strengthening the council's governance over the past year. In June, the four scrutiny committees held planning sessions to review the council's key challenges and priorities. The COE agreed to focus on work programmes on the critical issues that matter most to our residents, issues that directly impact services in Staffordshire, both now and in the future. Looking ahead, we remain committed to delivering rigorous and independent scrutiny. This is how we drive improvement and ensure the best possible outcomes for the people of Staffordshire. Finally, I would like to thank the officers who have supported the previous chairs and the new chairs. We deeply appreciate the expertise and guidance they continue to provide, which is fundamental to the work of our committees. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Jones, will you second?
That, Chair.
Thank you. Any speakers? Yes. councillor Anne Edler.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, health and care. I cannot let this item go by without saying something about the amount of good work and effort that was put in by the committee last year, led by the cabinet member and chairman of the Health and Care Committee and the Health and Care Committee. Wallis Quarry is the example, Wallis Quarry is one example eventually, and it was finally closed. We did a lot of good work on that. All right, we wasn't fully instrumental in getting it closed, but we did a lot of good work working towards to getting that. And it was good news for the residents in Newcastle. Mental health, credit due to Neil Khan and his team from Midland Partnership Foundation Trust for attending the meetings and giving us an insight into mental health and the work taking place. Mental health is an ongoing issue and will be for many years to come. The new crisis centre at St George's is an excellent facility and was so desperately needed within our community. 5.3 on health and care. I was part of the working group on the endometriosis on the Women's Health and Care Committee. And it will be good to see something done for men's health, probably looking at prostate cancer. So I asked that question. Thank you, Chairman.
And councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to add my thanks to all of the councillors, some who are in this chamber, but mostly who no longer are, who participated in the extensive scrutiny activities of this council. Our scrutiny is really something for us to be proud of. And you can read in the report all of the areas that our various scrutiny committees have delved into over the last council term, and the value that they've added in terms of making sure that we have good policy development, and then that we're actually making sure that we deliver on what we say we're going to. And most importantly, those insights from backbench members of the council to make sure that cabinet members are getting it right is absolutely essential. I'll particularly thank councillor Thompson, councillor Clements, councillor Cox and councillor Spencer, the chairs of the four main scrutiny committees. The one other thing I will say, colleagues, is this is our second council meeting now. We're three months in nearly. It's notable how quiet this council chamber is, how few people are actually standing up and speaking on any items. If you're not comfortable doing it here, I hope you will get comfortable doing it, but please do engage in the scrutiny process in those committees. It is essential work. It's really important if we're going to get things right. So do feel free to speak up here. And well done to councillor Edler for contributing so consistently. I think that's a good thing personally. I think that's a good thing personally. But, but do feel free to speak up here. But these scrutiny committees, it is essential work. So I hope you'll commit to it. And thank you to everybody who has done that over the last council term.
councillor Baker, would you like to respond? Okay. I move that this report, that the report be received. Is that agreed? Moving on to item nine, memorandum of understanding, MOU, substantial variation or development of health services. councillor Ollandy Fantini, will you move consideration of the report, please?
I would like to recommend that the council consider and approve the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, substantial variation or development health services and update the council's constitution accordingly. Also, to delegate the authority to the leader of the council in consultation with the monitoring officer to appoint the county council's representative on the joint committee.
councillor Kelly, you second?
I'd like to second this motion.
Thank you. councillor Colleen Greatrix.
Thank you, Chairman. councillor White has just referred to the benefit of having good scrutiny and this is an opportunity. I fully support the idea of getting a joint scrutiny panel. The whole principle being that the trusts aren't coterminers with our county boundaries as we currently understand them. So this is a joint working with Stoke City Council. And the idea is to have five members on each representation county, if I call it that. So there will be ten people on the panel and obviously there needs to be some sort of delegation in terms of how those people are selected. I will point out there needs to be political balance. So I'd also expect that we would have one of the five who would represent Staffordshire. But given the comments that have already been made about scrutiny, I do think it's valuable that we hold things up to the light. And I go back to various iterations of the health service. We've had CCGs and SHAs in the past. We've gone through the rigmarole of restructures and restructures on restructures. And now we have to obviously work with these trusts and the ICBs. So it's very important that we understand the structure of the organisation. It's important that we contribute to the scrutiny, as councillor White has said.
I move that the recommendations in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Don't sound so low. Be a bit more upbeat, please. Item ten, changes to the constitution, additional cabinet support for member position. councillor Cooper, will you move the consideration of the recommendation, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Changes to the constitution, what we really want to do is here is add an additional support member to help in this department. As mentioned by my colleague opposite, how important areas like SEND are to the county and the huge amount of budget that it does take up. We feel that it is so important that it does require additional help and support to deliver the kinds of services that we want for our children across the whole of Staffordshire. Therefore, I would like to put forward and make this recommendation a change. And have our colleague Alex, who is actually a trained psychologist in his own right, and he actually went through the system. So he has previous experience of this. So I'd like to put forward that change, if I may.
councillor Murray, would you like to stand, please?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded, sorry, councillor Hunt.
Apologies for that. Just to correct the record, I was an assistant psychologist. So just so in case people don't think stolen valor and all that such. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the number of cabinet, oh, sorry. Sorry. councillor Walman.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Sorry, I did press my button quite late. So I acknowledge that. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. One is how much does that particular position cost the authority? And two, what is the person going to do in that role? Bearing in mind the previous cabinet member under the Conservative administration managed that portfolio on his or her own, and now there will be two positions to manage that. Why is that? Thank you.
councillor Cooper.
We'll come back with the detail actually of the cost. I'm happy to do that. I just think that this is in such an important area that it does require that extra attention. Now, you might not think that, but we think the people of Staffordshire, we owe them that duty of care. We owe these children the duty of care. So as much help and support we can give to deliver the best service possible is the way forward. So that's our view. You may take a different view. You may take it more likely. You may not think that it's worthy of that investment. But we think our children are worthy of that investment. So that's why we move that we have Alex Hunt in that position.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair. I just do need to respond to that. So firstly, regarding areas that we can work together, SEND is absolutely one of those. It's another area where there's a hospital pass from central government, isn't there, in terms of a really difficult system that we try to make work here in Staffordshire? But regarding this additional spending, we, we as councillors are stewards of taxpayers' money. This is money that will be spent on something else if it is not spent on this allowance for a politician. And that money could be spent on delivering services to children with special educational needs. So we hear what you're saying in terms of the difficulties in this area, and we do understand that. But we would like some detail. If we're going to vote to support this, we'd like to be able to. We'd like to have some proper details to what this person is actually going to do. Because this is taxpayers' money we're talking about spending, which could go into paying for services for children with special educational needs. So I will just press the leader or the cabinet member to provide some further detail on this. As I say, we'd love to be able to support you on it and we support the overall endeavour in terms of SEND. But some more detail, please, if we are going to support this today.
councillor Cooper.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to reply. Again, I say we are happy to support. It was in our manifesto. We stood on the platform. We were going to try and help and support these children across Staffordshire to the best of our ability. We will find the money to do that. Not a problem. But we think these kids, the most vulnerable in society, are the most deserving. And therefore I move that we have Alex Hunt in that position. And we'll come back with the figures for you. I know you don't care in terms of that. You're more interested in the money. But I'm thinking about the children, quite frankly. So let's put our resources in an effort to try and help these vulnerable children.
councillor Catherine Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. councillor Cooper, I'm very disappointed that you're bringing this all down about children and children's services. We all here are here to stand for our residents and our children. And to actually turn it round to say that we don't believe in everything that should be possible for these children, I think is pretty appalling and pretty low. This shouldn't be a political decision. This should be a decision about somebody needing help in a committee, but understanding the money that is involved. And to have a vote on spending more money today to a political post to support a member, I'm sorry, to turn it round and talk about us not supporting children in Staffordshire, I think is pretty low. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Farrell.
I just find it a bit disingenuous of the leader to mischaracterise what we're asking. We're just, we're looking for some detail on what this extra post will do. It's not about whether the post will help or not help, but we agree we need to put more effort, of course, into this really important area of our council. But this is our second council meeting since the new administration's taken over. And just today, we've, we're proposing to add more money for this post. We earlier had more money for a chairman and a vice chairman. We've got the by-election today in Equershall and Nosal that's costing the council £30,000. So that's about £50,000 of extra spend. Now, if the money is going to be spent in the right areas, then absolutely. Tell us about it. Give us some detail on how this extra post is going to help. But just randomly putting out, yes, we need to help more children. Yes, of course, we agree. Tell us specifically how this post is going to help and we'll support it.
councillor Ian Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm delighted, again, given the opportunities to say this. And I'm sorry you don't like the fact that we had a manifesto pledge. That's your problem, not ours, quite frankly. We will put as much resources into this particular area as we can possibly do. The money I spend, I get that. But also, again, it's a bit rich for the Conservative Party. I mean, we had a by-election in Tamworth, didn't we? That cost the taxpayer £250,000, if I remember unnecessarily. And I think the national news today, what the Tory party did during their cover-up, seven billion pounds is it that it's going to cost the taxpayer? And we're asking one person to help children? Get your priorities right.
councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Chair. This is ridiculous. Was the post advertised beyond this council? Is it just going inside to a member of the council, please?
And councillor Greatrix.
Chairman, can I support the comment that councillor Wilman said in terms of procedure? I find it very difficult to adjust to this arrangement where people are allowed to stand up and speak as many times as they want. This is not the procedure that we've got in our constitution. And maybe there's a conversation to be had with the officers about how it should run. Having said that, I will also back up the comments that councillor Farrell has made. And in terms of manifesto pledges, councillor Cooper, one of the manifesto pledges was to eliminate waste and cut out unnecessary costs and examine the homework. So we're only asking for something that's fairly straightforward. How do we justify to anybody who asks us, what's this new person going to do? What's the purpose behind it? How much is it going to cost? Is there a cost benefits analysis done as a result of having this extra role? Will it reduce the cost of the service in some way? Will it increase the income in some way? There has to be a financial evaluation done because that's what the manifesto pledge has said you will do.
And councillor Hussain.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I feel rather very uncomfortable to hear the pronouns you, you, you. It shouldn't be in the position, this should be through you, Mr Chairman. We should be addressing any councillor through you with due respect. I don't want to mention, it could be the second meeting, I hope moving forward, we should be, put this one in our mind. Second issue as well, I have no doubt in my mind, any one of us, we, all of us, we want nothing but the very best for the SEND children. And I don't want anybody to use this one as a political football. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hussain. councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much for that and the opportunity to respond. Again, we are responding to the needs of the children. You may want to sort of play political games and honey, but we will give you the details, no problem with that. But at the end of the day, we are focusing on the children of Staffordshire. We are going to fulfil our manifesto pledge with our members' opposite. We're going to do the best we can with the resources that we have available. And if you don't like that, I'm afraid that's part of politics, is the fact that, you know, we think it's a very, very important thing.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded, sorry. I will take this one. councillor Holland.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. councillor Cooper, is it the case that you can't answer the question because you haven't done your homework? And is it the case that it's just jobs for the boys?
councillor Cooper.
Well, thank you for the flippant question on that one. No, it's a cabinet position and it's not a salary. It's a remuneration for doing a role. We do think it's important. And we are going to use the resources we have available to actually support as many children across Staffordshire as possible. And we'll give you an answer if you want later on about the cost of that.
Thank you. Right. It has been moved and seconded that the number of cabinet support members be increased from three to four by the addition of the role of cabinet support member for SEND. Is that agreed? Item eleven, appointment of the chairman and vice chairman of committees. councillor Cooper, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to move the consideration of the report as stated.
councillor Murray.
Second the motion.
Are there any? Yes. councillor Val Chapman.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to ask the leader, why are you giving one person three vice chairmanships? Do you not have enough councillors who have the capability for the roles?
And councillor Walman.
Thank you, Chairman. My colleague councillor Farrell has alluded to this earlier. £27,000 on election being spent today. £14,307.01 is the special allowance that you've just awarded to one of your councillors. And this particular item, £11,133. It's a significant amount of money. And as you said in the manifesto, you promised that you would cut waste. Is this Reform's answer?
Point of order.
Moved on from the previous question. We're going on salaries.
councillor, would you like to carry on?
I won't repeat everything I've just said, but I will ask the question, which is that, given the amount of spending that you have made just in this meeting alone, is that Reform's modus operandi? Or are you going to be doing something different in the next meeting?
councillor Cooper.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the three roles of chairman are actually, there's no payment for that at all. So there's no extra salary payment, if that's what you're alluding to. I'm sorry that you don't have enough people here to fill all the roles, but that's the nature of politics since the first of May. If you're looking for a job, we don't have any for you. The other bit that I was referring to, I'm sorry, I lost the thread of the question. Although, could you just repeat the second part? It was about.
councillor Holland.
Yeah, just repeat that, sorry. I was too busy writing the first bit down.
Could you just repeat the last part of your question?
It's simply about the waste that you've.
Oh, that's it. Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Exactly. And then what are you going to be doing next meeting? Are you going to be spending any more?
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you for that. I lost my thread as I was writing down the answer to the first one. Yeah, we're going through a process. Yeah, we're reviewing, we're listening, we're looking. We're doing internal investigations of where we think that the Conservative Party failed in their duty. They missed opportunities. We will mark their homework. We are going to bring back preliminary reports on their homework. And so far, it's not looking good. It's looking like a U.
It has been moved and seconded that the recommendations contained in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item eight, overview and scrutiny annual report, 2024/25. Run, yeah. Okay. Item twelve, questions, understanding order eight. Members, the questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each questioner five minutes in which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate is allowed on questions. Number one, councillor Wallins, do you have a supplementary question?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I do. I'd like to keep it after my primary question. Thank you. My main question is, many residents in Litchfield and the wider areas in my constituents and around the areas of Litchfield are deeply concerned about the Samuel Johnson maternity closure as it provides vital services across.
Reading out the original question.
I don't know. Yeah, sorry, my bad. Supplementary question is, would you agree that the previous Conservative administration missed key opportunities to consult with the electorate of Litchfield and also to run a cost benefit analysis? Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Rogerson.
Thank you, councillor, Mr Chairman. The matter of whether they've missed an option is irrelevant as there's actually work going on at the minute. I have put it towards the scrutiny committee, of course, I do know that we'll be benefiting from there, and there'll be no decisions made until it is fully looked at. The consultation doesn't finish till the 22nd of August at midnight. Obviously, there'll be a lot more information and decisions made after that and through scrutiny. Thank you.
May I just say, it's not the purpose to read out the first question, you just read out the supplementary, please. Item 2, councillor Clissett.
Thank you, Chair. Would you agree that the previous Conservative administration missed a key opportunity to use a £5.3 million underspend, not because of astute financial management, but due to the failure of properly allocating previously issued granted funding towards desperately needed projects across Staffordshire, specifically relating to childcare placements and social care grants? And what is the onset of the impact of those underspends?
Councillor Large.
Thank you, councillor. I would agree that they have missed an opportunity. And I think the key thing about the £5.3 million underspend is that the most important factor here is that the £5.3 million was as a result of careful management by the officers of Staffordshire County Council, in despite of some of the efforts of the previous administration. So what I'd like to cover, and the devil is in the detail here, and as we said seven weeks ago, that we were going to lift the bonnet and have a, take the engine out and have a look inside. We all know our role and it's good to see the people saying today how we, it's important to save every penny taxpayers' money. But the previous administration didn't because none of them had ever run an £800 million business with 4,800 staff. So how could they give advice? How could they manage? How could they control the way that the officers behaved? So if we look at the way it works at the moment, is that they had the underspend sent to them and they got their briefing note and it said £5.3. It could have been £3.2 or £1.4, they'd have been quite happy with that or even break even. Because they were not in control of that, but despite some of that, they did have an impact on some of those measures. And, but actually, there was one thing that was very good, and that was that three of the Conservative councillors in the previous administration were involved with EnTrust. That's a business that was created with Staffordshire County Council and Capita. And their roles when they were on the board of this business was to simply get a second revenue stream running. And in actual fact, that's all they had to do and make sure that quality was involved. But all you have to do is look up Companies House at the moment on trust and you'll see what the previous administration had done with it. So another impact that the previous administration had was on, and they mentioned it, they mentioned it last time, we've spent £15 million on highways, they said. Actually, you didn't, you gave...
It was about the underspend, not about other previous decisions of the county council. Councillor Large, could you get to the point, please?
Of course, go. The whole point, Mr Chair, is that all of these impacted on the underspend. They all impacted on the underspend and that's why I'm bringing to the attention. £15 million, they said, spent on the road project. In actual fact, that £15 million, the acceleration initiative of £15 million was not £15 million at all. Amy didn't put £15 million worth of tarmac on the roads. In fact, as a result of that initiative, it went from £62 a square metre to £90 a square metre. So wasted money. The underspend could have been a lot more. Another element to this is that the reviews of the finance were very simple to do, and that is that we had capital expenditure and budgets elsewhere, we had headcount elsewhere. So how could they possibly manage that process? What we'll be doing in future, as from next week, is we're starting an efficiency review to bring a one view of all of our accounting. And again, that impacts on the underspend. Another impact on the underspend is how quickly they failed to spend...
Yeah, he's coming to the underspend, councillor Large, he is going to. Carry on, councillor Large, please.
Carry on. Again, thank you, Mr Chair. The important thing here, again, is it's all to do with the underspend. So let's take another area they failed. IT as an enabler. They spend, they didn't spend enough money on IT to enable the system to improve efficiency, reduce headcount. And we got that icon of, on our credit card system. It was a very manual process, gaps in protocol, missed paperwork. 710 cards, thousands of pounds in, thousands of transactions and millions spent in money.
Time's up, councillor Large, time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, coming to question three, councillor Hales.
Good morning, Chair. Would you agree, councillor Coles, that the previous Conservative administration missed a key opportunity to clarify why £1.3 million of public funds was spent on Burton Library between March 23 and July 24 under the previous administration of Staffordshire County Council? Thank you.
Councillor Coles.
Good morning. Thank you for your question. I have been looking at this because there was only around £4.2 million across all of the 43 libraries and it was a considerable spend. So I think it did need more vigour, more understanding, and well, how are they going to spend that? I understand there was roof problems and I've answered that in the first one. However, when you're spending that money and there's basically architects fees, consultancy fees of nearly £90,000 and it's tied to the actual overall project value, it increases spending. So I think that needed better looking at. £350,000 on the furniture has three floors, there's a lot of furniture in there, but you have to think about, it's 43 libraries that we need to sustain for many, many years for our communities. And even though it had a high street fund, all of this is taxpayers' money. So we need to be more rigorous in that. There was no marketing plan, there was no way that they could guarantee that footfall was going to come back into that building. So I think going forward, we need to look at this and we need to scrutinise it much better. And we've got lots of plans for making it multifunctional, multi-use, to ensure we use all of Staffordshire taxpayers' money in the best possible way. Thank you.
Item 4, councillor Luca.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. My question is, would you actually agree that the previous Conservative administration actually missed a key opportunity by failing to respond to serious concerns about the funding cuts and the lack of investment in the CSA and missing from home services showed a major disregard for the safety of our most vulnerable?
Councillor Green.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, they did. The funding cuts and lack of investment in CSA and missing from home services, ignoring clear evidence and professional warnings, has left exploited children at great risk and sent a clear message that their safety was not a concern or a priority. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Bagley.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Would you agree that the previous Conservative administration missed a key opportunity to review Staffordshire County Council's growing staff numbers during the cost of living crisis, particularly at a time when many large private sector businesses were forced to reduce headcount over the same two-year period?
Councillor Large.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, they did miss an opportunity. The previous administration allowed the headcount to rise, not knowing if it was appropriate or not, because no one on the opposite side in previous administration have ever run a business of this size. Since the cost of living crisis, where most businesses had a headcount freeze or a reduction in their headcounts, Staffordshire County Council have increased from 4,000 to 4,820. And that is across the board and not just individual areas. So, except for finance, which had only a 2% increase, because you've not managed the headcount correctly, those costs have risen. And again, we can come back to this again in October when we do a little bit more deep diving. So let's have a look at what they've done. We asked the question about the number of headcount and they've gone up progressively and progressively and progressively. Another key area is about quality. There's not been appraisals in this organisation for the last eight years. So when you're increasing the headcount, how did the previous administration deal with that? There is the ad hoc and there's some special groups of people who are doing appraisals, but because of the devolve management process, everything's kept at manager level. So we never knew what the quality test was with our staff, but you carried on just increasing the numbers and increasing the numbers. So you did lose control of that headcount. But let's look at it again in a different way. Let's look at it this way. How many people work remotely? How many people are working from home? Nobody knows. How many people come in one day a week? Nobody knows. Let's go a bit further, because if you've got those people in your headcount and you go, well, we want people working from home, Reform are happy to do that, but the most important factor behind that is, is how efficient are they? The previous administration failed to invest in software that monitored homeworking, not even to the point of being able to measure whether they'd switch the laptop on or off, no wiggling the mouse at 5pm. So whilst you're raising the headcount constantly, nobody ever took a step back and said, how efficient is this business running? What we're planning to do, and maybe that's one of the reasons why we didn't hit our sickness targets, because what you get in a devolve management structure is personality management unless it's managed from the top. So with no appraisal system, you didn't invest in the finance and the payroll system, which includes appraisals, you were four years too late. We've only just got that package on the system now. If you weren't managing that headcount, it would have had more and more efficiency. But don't worry about that because we're now working with a new leadership team. You were the people that were here for 14 years, you were the people managing that headcount. Whilst other businesses, when the Chancellor raised the NI and the whammy, what did we get from it? What did the private businesses get? Nothing. The council's got a handout. It didn't cover all the money, but it didn't make you stop and think, let's have a headcount freeze, now we just carried on. And as I said, it was across the boards. But what we're going to be doing is taking a review of HR and the infrastructure, we'll be putting a new system in place. Thank you.
Item 6, oh, question 6, sorry, councillor Doherty.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask councillor Miners, what safety protocols and monitoring plans will be implemented during operation and decommissioning of the solar battery farms? Thank you.
Councillor Miners.
Thank you very much, councillor Tracy. Maybe we should take some heat out of a potentially very toxic situation and actually work together here. I would like to propose, we do have a cross-party working group to look at the best sites that are appearing across Staffordshire, that's the battery energy storage systems that are next to solar panels. It has been forced on us across the whole, across government, there are about four and a half thousand acres at the moment in Staffordshire of the solar panels. There's a big worry in the communities. Stobai Chartley is having a working group, there's a battery energy storage system planned there at U Tree Farm. The constituents, the people are very worried. They read about fires in Liverpool, fires in Essex this year, fires in Australia, fires in California. On that small group that we're having, already with cross-party, so Gavin Williamson was at the Stobai Chartley meeting, as were a number of people, they're very concerned, there's questions being raised in the Houses of Parliament. So we don't know yet about how they're going to work together for decommissioning these sites, if the companies are transferred, if they pull out dividends and the companies disappear. So it's a very, I would say, toxic situation out there. A lot of people are very worried. Two nights ago, they were worried about the potential contamination of groundwater in Stobai Chartley, there's old gypsum mines there, it's very close to Breathe Hill Reservoir. We read again for these battery energy storage systems, even if the planning is approved, it's, if it's not allowed, they're getting overrun by central government and the county council actually don't even have the powers, a lot of it is with the district and parish. So I propose that we do get together, we do think about people, we do perhaps not have it as a political fight here, just for the people of Staffordshire to work together to cross-check about the safety. We pull in parish councils, we pull in firemen, it needs a lot of support for getting water up there, for doing tests to de-energise the heat if these do become in fire. And we talk about wanting Staffordshire to become the heart of Staffordshire, where people will come and visit and spend their money. Well, they're going to have to put very high fences up because 80% of Stobai Chartley area is planned to be covered in solar farms. This is happening in the north of Staffordshire, it's happening in the south of Staffordshire, and the central government is wanting to have, I think, four gigawatts and wanting to increase it to 30 over gigawatts, 27 gigawatts by the next few years. So it's very worrying and I do hope that we can get together and put politics aside and look for logic to see if they work. We're having very good help from our officers to pour further information into this, we're looking to actually, to make sure we look at both sides of the argument, to pull in companies who are proposing these sites and have a very balanced argument and see if this is going to work or not, and try and help the worries of those people out there in our constituencies who are worrying about their fields, their farmland being covered in solar panels and perhaps dangerous battery energy storage systems in their communities. Thank you.
Question 7, councillor Pendleton.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Murray, would you agree that the previous Conservative administration missed a key opportunity to better promote the county's culture, history, business, industry and leisure, such as the unpublished LIV golf tournament, which was Staffordshire's best-kept secret?
Councillor Murray.
Thank you, councillor Pendleton. Absolutely agree with this. In my campaign, I said Staffordshire had become the forgotten county of England. We were once known as the heart of the country and because of my background, I said Bitter lost its beat. And this is where I knew coming, the beating heart of the country has come from. Liv is a great example of where missed opportunities lie. It was chosen not to interact with it. Fine, but why was it not promoted? This year's event, starting next week, has a global live audience of over 120 million people globally. Not one bit of those viewers will know it is Staffordshire. They will see JCB, but they will not know Staffordshire. We have become the area you drive through, not the area you come to. Our overnight tourist rate is abysmal, one of the lowest in the country. We are a single-stop, single-destination area rather than a multi-stop. Where you come and you stay somewhere and you visit Alton Towers, not you go to Alton Towers then depart back. We have great events and festivals throughout the whole of our county, in the hundreds every year. We've just celebrated 100 years of Stoke-on-Trent with amazing festivals. with amazing festivals. I've spoken to well over 100 people in Staffordshire these last couple of weeks. They did not even know it was on. I have no idea how few people, if any, ever knew that was on nationally or globally. We have a great history, a proud history of Staffordshire. We were once the heart of the industrial revolution with a black country. We are still a great county, and it should be shouted, it should be cheered, it should be championed at every level. Branding is everything. We should be known at a global level of Staffordshire, and that has been missed. That will be changed. And it is important, and it goes beyond politics, it goes beyond that of this chamber. It comes down to a legacy for everybody thereafter, and we will then want our people to come and remain rather than a brain drain that we have at the moment. And this will make Staffordshire well-known. It will improve investment, improve the economy and improve the welfare of everybody within this proud county.
Thank you. Question eight, councillor Broome.
Thank you, Chair. I've been asked by the people I represent, the voters of Billough, to ask this. Would the cabinet member agree with me that the previous Conservative administration... Sorry?
Carry on, please.
Would the cabinet member agree with me that the previous Conservative administration have missed a key opportunity to audit the AMI contract in order to ensure quality assurance and financial accountability by marking their own homework in cases of poor workmanship?
councillor Mason.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor. I do agree that the opportunity was missed. And I think in the response to the main question, I pointed out that we can't obtain records as to how many repairs have been revisited for a re-repair because they failed in any period of time. That means potentially, and I don't know whether we have or we haven't, I'll state that now, but we have been paying AMI to do their work again where it failed because of their own poor workmanship. That can't be right, and that is a missed opportunity. What I can assure the councillor is, I think it's absolutely vital to efficient and value-for-money delivery on the highways network that we fix that. And I have asked the officers of the council to work up a proposal about how we can track repairs, because the job number just gets closed on completion, back to any failures and make sure they're repaired at the supplier's cost and not at the taxpayer's cost. Thank you.
Question nine, councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a new councillor, can I just say, and I'm sure I'm not supposed to, it's a really difficult situation when you're hearing all these questions and we're not allowed to reply, and it's being used to political gain, and we're not able to reply. So I think it's really not a nice situation, and I think it's something perhaps to think about in future. May I just make one point that councillor Murray, you might remember that JCB Live, JCB's a sponsor, and it is on the We Are Staffordshire website, yeah, and on that initiative. Perhaps you've forgotten that. So, Abbots Bromley...
Can you make your point, please, councillor?
So, my question is about Abbots Bromley, the Crown pub. Over 12 years, the Crown customers have sat out, which is what you might know, a little slip road where there's lots of parking. And the parking is such that people really don't even park in front of the pub because they sit out, have a drink. Look at the beautiful village. It's great for tourism to have the life and soul in the village. Elderly population brings in revenue business to everybody. I note that the response says that they're supporting any change, but at the moment, the MP, the parish council, all the major organisations are in support of the Crown having seating, limited seating in front of them. But at the moment, your response is just like, obviously, what East Staffordshire Borough Council licensing, they're telling us, we can only have a pavement licence. So my question is, or my supplemental question, please, can we actually have a measured constructive response and some actual initiative where we can change this, what is not really a proper slip road, into something that's productive for the businesses, not just of Abbots Bromley, but probably all your other pubs as well, which did take place safely in Covid, so why can't it take safely now? Thank you.
councillor Mason.
Yes, thank you, councillor. The response, I actually agree. There was 12 years where they had these facilities on the road, and nobody actually had an issue or complained. However, a question was asked of this council and its officers, and that was the relationship of that arrangement with the designation of the road. The road is a two-way highway. That's how it's designated. My response was that we, we as a council will work with you, we will work with the business owners, we'll work with the Borough Council to find a solution. That solution might be we need to change the designation. That solution might be we need to change it to one-way. That solution might be we need to create an area that doesn't result in tables sitting in a designated live carriageway. I don't know what that answer is, councillor. What I did do was offer that myself and the officers will work with yourselves to find a solution for the village and for the business, and that offer stands.
Question 10, councillor White.
Thank you very much to councillor Cooper for the answers to the eight questions that went unanswered at the last full council meeting. It is disappointing that I had to ask for these and that we didn't have them sooner, because there are a lot of responses in here where I think we would have been asking questions today. But I only get the chance to ask a supplemental about one. So on financial plans, earlier in this meeting, the cabinet member for finance and the leader complimented the work of our finance team, Pete Shakespeare sat here and his team alongside him, in terms of their excellent preparation and delivery of the 2024/25 medium-term financial strategy, the five-year budget of the council, an excellent piece of work. Here, I'm very concerned to see that the current medium-term financial strategy, which details £95 million worth of savings, is described as alleged savings. Now, I understand that the new administration may not want to deliver those savings, but the medium-term financial strategy is a strictly-controlled legal process. It goes for extensive auditing and scrutiny, and it has to be signed off by our chief financial officer. If that has not been prepared correctly, and that use of the term alleged there, that these are not proper savings, is quite a serious matter. If that is actually the case, there are ramifications for that. So my question is, will the leader consider what is included here in that answer and write to all members to confirm whether the current medium-term financial strategy has been properly prepared or not?
councillor Cooper.
Chairman, and thank you. It was quite a shopping list, wasn't it, you know, all these questions? Well, I'm sorry that you didn't like the answers of the fact we'd marked your homework because we'd just come into administration. However, saying that, yeah, there's quite a few. I'll refer to some of these questions that you actually asked me and regarding finance, and why I think some of these points, or shall we say, slightly adultery thinking in what you've put forward. I'll just take one, you know, the net zero plan at the moment that the council is going to do. I'm referring to the £95 million that you're talking about. So this is where you're going to get your savings. You don't like, you don't like the idea of people replying to the fact of employing one person when anybody said...
councillor Cooper, councillor Cooper, point of order, please.
My question specifically, and I limited it to the one item, following the rules, my question was on the response regarding financial plans, point two, and my question was whether the leader of the council will write to all members to confirm whether the current medium-term financial strategy has been properly prepared.
councillor Cooper, can you make sure you address the point, please?
I will. I've got to address the £95 million. That's the point. That's a figure you've quoted. You're happy to sort of worry about £14,000 for a position, but you seem to don't like the fact that we tell you there's millions of pounds that you've missed or spent incorrectly. So that's part of your 95. I'm going to give you an example of where that comes in. If you don't like the answer, I'm afraid that's, we're marking your homework. These are your figures, your figures. So the EV thing, you're happy to spend £4.6 million of taxpayers' money on projects where they have no customers and no demand. We're not prepared to spend taxpayers' money on that, so that comes out of the £95 million. There's elements within this, the financial plan, point two. But no, I'm reading the fact of the question. Staffordshire County Council's track record of establishing legal entities has cost this council £78 million. That's part of the empty address. That's a point within the 95.
councillor Cooper, can you, hold on a minute. councillor Walman.
Thank you. The point of order is that you're not asking the question that the leader of the opposition has put. And I mentioned this the last time at the last meeting, that you weren't answering questions and you're not doing it again. My also point is a point of information, the EV strategy, I think, which you mentioned, the money comes from central government. I don't actually think any of the money whatsoever comes from this council. So perhaps you might want to check your facts before speaking on the matter.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
The leader has answered a specific question. Can you please answer that question, please?
Question, I'm being specific. If you're talking about the £95 million that you think you're going to find in the future, that's what we're looking at. You might not like the answers that the finance portfolio holds or the transport portfolio holds, but this is where the £95 million is gone and disappeared. This is available on public record. You can look on Companies House, you can dive into the public record and see this. This makes up part of your £95 million. If you don't like the answers, I would suggest you contact places like Companies House and go and see where your figures are bid. I'm more than happy to write to you and tell you where these figures came from.
Thank you. Question 11, councillor Farrell.
Thank you, chairman. And thank you to the leader of the council for that answer. You seem to find it funny that as elected members, you seem to be afraid of public meetings and subjecting yourselves to public scrutiny. I don't think you're serious about running this council. There's 12 weeks until we're back in this chamber for another council meeting. Isn't it just the case that under Reform UK, Staffordshire County Council is now becoming a do-nothing council?
councillor Cooper.
This is hilarious. I've just got, I've got a confirmation, the officers regard. It's nice you could actually all bother to turn up. We do have an absentee here. So, you know, if we do have a council, it'd be nice if all of you turned up. I know there's not many of you. Clarity regarding the fact of council diaries and stuff. Yeah, this was set last year under your administration. Oh dear, I just checked that with Matt's team, yeah. And it was approved. So, yeah, the calendar dates were actually published in November 2024. So if you don't like the diary dates, maybe you should go and have a chat with them.
councillor Edgler.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your answer that are meetings to take place about the EDR. But can I please ask that you arrange the date after the 10th of September, please? Thank you.
councillor Mason? Or Miners, sorry.
Thank you very much, councillor. And as we spoke previously, I realise you're on holiday till that date, so that'll be fine. As I said to you before as well, this situation has been going on for many, 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 many years. And since we were, you know, we were born cycling to school past those houses area. And you did mention as well that people are starting to think maybe they should put houses there rather than wait until we decide what to do with the road structure. It is a very difficult, very tricky situation. So I do welcome to come together and work with you on a solution that's the best use of our money and for the businesses and development and free-flowing of traffic through the area. Thank you very much.
Question 13, councillor Walman.
Thank you very much, chairman. I have no supplementary. Thank you to the cabinet member for the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Question 14, councillor Greitex.
Chairman, I do have a supplementary, and that's based on the fact that the original question hasn't been answered, which is a bit of a theme today, I think. What I'll do is I'll rephrase the original question and hopefully be helpful in doing that. The whole aspect of working with somebody like the ICB is a personal relationship one, and it's the relationship that a cabinet member and/or the leader might have with that body. So what, in essence, with the figures that are quoted in the original question, involves here, is trying to get under the skin of what the decisions might be taken by the ICB. You could even say, getting into grips with them is doing your homework and finding out what is likely to happen before it happens. The question has been answered to say, well, we'll boot it over to overview and scrutiny, and they can find out what's going to happen. Past tense. By the time it's been through overview and scrutiny and the consultation is completed, the ICB will be doing what it's doing. And we have this relationship between health and care where they're not very clearly defined. You know, the health stops at some point, the care starts at another point. There's a wavy line in between the two. And it's very difficult to understand what's going to happen if the health side of it drops the ball and stops doing some things and expects the care sector to pick it up. So I'll rephrase the question because it's not been answered correctly. How is the county council, through its cabinet member or cabinet leader, planning to address the significant impact that this will have, the stats that are quoted, on the local people of the county?
councillor Rogerson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor, for the question. The chief executive has written to the NHS England Regional Director and the Department of Health to raise concerns that the proposals in the NHS operational plan will compromise access to and the quality of local health services, and that this might be in a result in additional costs for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last question, councillor Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Cooper for your reply in which you refer to claims of savings. However, the savings of more than £320 million made during the Conservatives' time running the council are real. Will the leader confirm that this is factually correct?
For that, chairman. It's interesting how they use a timeline since 2009, so you can stretch it as far down into history as possible to try and give the maximum amount of savings, isn't it? But it comes back to this idea of the £95 million and the financial prudence of this particular set of councils that were elected. These officers are great. They do a great job. But they are led by, shall we say, the people. There are examples of contracts, of business deals, companies set up that's cost this council millions of, millions of pounds, millions, will watch. And yet, when we raise anything about finance, you cry and scream and make a noise and object. We try and bring it to the people of Staffordshire. We're right to know. This is all publicly available information. We said when we got into office, we would listen for a couple of months, we would mark your homework. We find bits and pieces, happy to publish this, happy to give this to the public gallery and see where you have spent millions and millions of pounds. More than happy to do that. So the savings, long history, but you won't talk about things when it's contracts and money.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, petitions. Does any member have a petition they wish to present? Yeah. Okay. Item 14. Okay. That being it, we'll now close the meeting. Thank you very much.